The City Council, Belvidere City Council, thank you, Committee of the Whole on August 22nd, 2022. The Clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee? McGee is absent. Maha?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather? Prather is absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Eight present?
Okay, thank you. Under public comment, we have Tyler and Nancy Towns here this evening. And I know you wanted to chat about an item that's going to be on the agenda. So if you don't mind, Tyler or Nancy, come on up and step in front of the mic. Welcome. Good to see you.
Hi, my name is Tyler Towns, and I talked to Mr. Snow, and I did contact Clint earlier too. I live on 248 West Harrison. It's Harrison and Ruby Street. And I'd really like to get a four-way stop there. Right now, we have the stops just on Ruby Street, and they go up and down Harris extremely fast. I've seen dogs get hit out there. Our neighbors have some kids out there. So I'd like to be able to bring it up to attention, and possibly if we could get that in, I'd really appreciate it. That's what I got. Thank you.
This will be on the agenda here in just a few minutes, Tyler, so if you want to...
Well, I'll stick around, sure.
Stick around, but understand your concern, and thank you for coming here this evening, taking the time to come up here and address the council.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
All right, under public forum, we have none this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Freeman?
Okay. So y'all know me. I'm Marcia Freeman, Alderman, Ward Five. I received an email, as I think you all did, in your city emails, but she wanted to make sure everybody saw it, so she messaged me and asked me to read it publicly tonight since she couldn't be here. Her name is Sheila Fowler. I don't have her address, but she lives in Ward Five. She says, "Good afternoon. My name is Sheila Fowler. Most of you know me as the Flood Lady. I had hoped to attend tonight's meeting, but I'm unable to, so I'm sending you what I would have said. I'm going to use a word multiple times. I chose this word because I felt everyone has experienced the meaning of this word in one form or another, probably multiple times in their life. The word I have chosen is disgusted. I was disgusted over the fact that the stormwater fee survey was sent out in a publication that most people view as junk mail and thrown out immediately, therefore never seen, never even seen the survey. As a matter of fact, there was quite a few aldermen that said they didn't even see the survey in the shopper. Disgusted that this so-called survey didn't tell the whole story and facts of the flooding and concerns in our city. It had no mention of the fact that the flooding caused by the inadequate storm sewers causes sewage to back up into multiple homes, which is a direct health risk for those families. Disgusted that at the open house informational meeting in regards to the survey, only three elected officials showed up and one citizen. Yeah, that would be me, the one citizen. Disgusted that upon leaving the meeting that night, I asked Brent Anderson if he thought if in my lifetime I would be able to see a solution to the flooding and sewage backups that I deal with, though response was no. I was told if I am feeling that discouraged and hopeless, as I had explained, I feel, he was sure if I called the city that I would be offered a reasonable amount of money for my property and that the city would possibly purchase it from me. Disgusted that while talking to the city attorney at the fair, he too said that it would be more cost efficient for the city to just purchase and tear down the homes that are affected with the sewage backups caused by flooding. Now, I realize that most of you see these houses as just properties. Well, let me explain something. They are not just properties, they are homes. They are the homes that we raised our children in. They are the homes that we've put a lot of sweat equity into. They're the homes that hold memories of those loved ones that may no longer be with us. They are the homes that are part of us, our very existence. To some of you, that may mean nothing, and I'm saddened by that. And I also want to point out is that truly what you, the elected officials of Belvidere, want, a bunch of vacant properties, properties that the city will be responsible for maintaining, and what will the cost be year after year. Disgusted that out of 9,100 surveys, only 199 came in, which in my opinion tells me that only 199 people care. Oh, that only 199 people were concerned, the rest just plainly didn't care, or were uninformed of it to begin with because, well, it was in junk mail. Disgusted that you, the elected officials of this city, let 150 citizens out of a population of 25,932 sway your vote. And allow me to point out that those 150 are not affected by the health risk of sewage being pumped into their home, for if they were, they would all be in favor of the proposed $45 yearly payment. Disgusted that it's been five years since the last flood sewage backups, and I am no closer to seeing any solution to pay to fix this issue. The former mayor used my flooding in my neighborhood to help get the sales tax increase. He spoke of the flooding when he wanted the gasoline tax, but as I begged for a percentage to be earmarked for the solution, nothing happened. The money went to the general fund. Disgusted. I truly expected that the elected officials of this city would show more compassion, concern, diligence, and determination to protect its citizens, protect them from the hardships and health risks that they suffer due to an inadequate infrastructure that they, as elected officials, are responsible for maintaining and upgrading. I urge and encourage you to put it up for vote again. Have the courage to stand up against the 150 that said no out of the 9,100 surveys, for there is more than 150 of your citizens that live in fear, and the very home that they live in that protects them from the elements also possesses the greatest health risk to their lives. In case you aren't aware of that health risk, the sewage that backs up to our homes has every known disease and bloodborne pathogen in it. Would you walk through sewage? Would you want it pumped in your homes? No, you wouldn't, because that would make you disgusted. So that's hers. I want to read just a portion of one that I sent our Public Works Director. "To me, this is the most important issue our city faces. We cannot effectively control stormwater indefinitely with century-old infrastructure and nonexistent pathways via curbs and gutters in multiple areas. A mere 86 cents per week in dedicated funds in a state where the minimum wage will soon be $13 an hour is not only reasonable but necessary. Perpetually kicking this can down the road as the rains continue and testify with more frequency doesn't serve our city well. The cost will continue to escalate and citizens suffer. I don't believe residents should be forced out of their family homes through no fault of their own simply because their elected officials failed to act. I can't help but notice that although we may have spent a couple hundred thousand on the Bellwood area for minimal relief in the fifth ward, we spent above and beyond $4 million for permanent relief in Ward One. What the North Side naysayers don't seem to understand is that even though they might not suffer from flooding, well over $4 million of their tax money has already been spent for this at the cost of capital money, that if this fee were implemented, very well could have been diverted somewhere else. The hundred or so constituents I spoke to in my ward over the past week by going door-to-door were all in favor of the fee. Many have given up hope that anything will ever be done and express disappointment in the current administration's stance. It also told me that inserting the surveys into the shopper did not accurately gauge sentiment. I found myself profusely apologizing to each and every one that their local elected officers had abandoned not only them, but the city as a whole." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? I would like to say that under that, if you listen to or you just hear that side of the discussion, that isn't the only thing that the city has done. The city has started a project that goes to the river, and we will try and alleviate it, which would be the where the biggest issue has to be solved in order to solve anything that would be upstream. That project doesn't serve just one ward. It serves the south part of the city. So we have started on that endeavor. That will be an expensive project. In regards to the surveys, you know, not only did we receive, I think, 199 out of 99,180 surveys. I understand how individuals who are affected by flooding, I get it. Matter of fact, I was the alderman in my ward at the time in 2009 that had actually come to City Hall with a video, and I had played it as I went down and filmed it as individuals over on Nevin Court, on Columbia Avenue, and on the south side of, on Seventh Avenue, Seventh Street, on the south side of Belvidere, in my ward and outside of my ward, Highland Avenue. Throughout the city, we have taken, made some efforts, and actually, I think we've made a difference. We have alleviated some of the flooding, at least the last storm that we had. I didn't receive one call here. I will guarantee you that at some point, if you receive a five-inch rainfall in an hour or an eight-inch rainfall in several hours, like Freeport had experienced, I think Mr. Anderson, our director, had mentioned that there's no system that you could spend. You can spend $45 million, $46 million. However, there is no system that will not be inundated, and that's just a fact. So we do have individuals in the city that live in low areas. That's a fact of life. You know, we have individuals that have purchased houses. They're in low, they're in a flood way, and they have been. And we are trying our very best to, without raising taxes, I know I had made the comment that in this day and age with inflation at anywhere from eight and a half to 10 and a half percent, however you want to slice it, that there are a lot of individuals in this community, and we saw that reflective on the lack of concern or the lack of the turn-in on our survey. But they don't believe that this is the best time to be taxing our residents or piling on our residents. We've had that discussion. I could read to you some of the emails that submissions that I've had as well, and they've stated that. They have stated almost verbatim that, you know, we don't feel that at this time that we would want to be taxed additional amount of money, and that's their sentiment. I don't know of any other democratic way to do it. I think we had tried to reach out to the public. We had put our best foot forward. Finally, I know this was brought up not under my administration, but before I got here. I had inherited this. But by the same token, we are moving forward to try and do this essentially not all at once. And even if you passed, if we would have passed the utility fee, which is a nice word for tax, I know the city attorney and I've had some discussion about that, but even if you would have passed that throughout the whole city, you would still not have relief in the most extreme circumstances. And that's just the way it is. The other part of it is, we may not be happy with how a certain vote goes before the city council, but the last I knew, and I've always believed that democracy, the majority of a vote is, we may not always agree with it, but that's how it has to be decided. And that's just the way it has to be decided. I know there has been discussion about moving forward, taking a look at maybe putting it on as an advisory referendum, or trying to gauge better what the residents would think. Somebody had asked me that publicly, and I have no problem with that. I think, you know, that if that's what the council chooses to do in the future, that would be, I do not have a problem with it. I can just say that from where I sit right here now, and from where the council has made a decision, that's how we move forward in making decisions. The majority, they have a vote, and that vote is how we proceed forward. So not everybody's going to like it, and I understand that, but it also doesn't mean that we give up. We're going to continue to try and alleviate flooding without passing a tax unless the residents tell us otherwise. If they come to us and they say, yes, we want this tax, we want this to be passed. If they do that, well, then that's a decision the council will have to make. If we want to move forward as well, if we want to have another survey that potentially goes out to the residents in another manner, we can address that as well in the future. But as we sit right now, it was an effort that we had made to try and reach out and give individuals an opportunity to be heard. I think they were. We may not all be happy with it. We may not agree with it, but as I said, we are going to do, move forward and do the best we can with the money that we have. I know the Finance Director, we've talked about, and I talked a little bit about this back some years ago, 1999, 2000, we had put a utility tax on our residents that had went to a referendum question, advisory referendum question twice. The residents passed on it. They said no. And then in order to get it through the utility tax, they had told the sitting council that trusts us, that we will, if we pass that, it will be earmarked and utilized strictly for road and infrastructure improvements, which is a part of flooding as well. And they secured the vote to get that passed by saying that we will make that a supermajority to be able to change how that money is spent. Well, later on, whenever we had a downturn in the economy, that was thrown, that safeguard was thrown away, and instead of a supermajority, which would be seven out of 10 aldermen, in two, I believe it was 2008, I'm not quite sure on that, but a simple majority undid it. So they undid what the promise was regarding funding. And I know we've talked about that, and I've talked about that, and I've talked about it for years, but I also believe that we can take a look at some of the money that was earmarked for that, and how that is being applied and how that is being spent. And that's another avenue that we can look at for funding. But in the short term, you've had before you a chance to vote. We've just acquired property over on Locust Street, West Locust Street, that we are, and also we have easement for storage at Franklin Wire, and that doesn't just benefit and will not just benefit one particular ward. It will benefit the southern part of the city, and it will give us a building block going forward to be able to address other areas in the south part of the city that have had flooding. So I want to make it clear that I sympathize with people. I've been out there. Originally, I had asked the city to put in a electric pump over off of, behind Nevin Court back in, I think it was 2008 or '09. The city council at that time, they recognized that for my Ward One constituents when I was an alderman, and we placed that in. We changed that to a natural gas-fired apparatus because it seemed like whenever we had a storm and the power was out, they would have no electricity to that pump. So that's one of the things that we've done. We also redid Columbia Avenue. At that time, that was a $2.8 million, I believe, somewhere around there, maybe $3 million investment that was made, and that helped as well. Do we have all the answers here in front of us? We don't. Are we going to be able to get them with a $45 million,[1383.72][1384.77]$46 million tax hike that was actually started before I got in here? And, you know, that's a decision that the council had made. So I am cognizant of flooding. I do care about it, regardless of what some people imply. It hasn't been, this latest attempt at alleviating flooding doesn't just help Ward One, and it's disingenuous to say that. So I, you know, I want people, I want the council to understand that we certainly want to continue to do the best we can. We have to live within our means as well, and we have to abide by what the voters, what our constituents tell us, and that's not what they told us. And we've had that discussion last week. We had that discussion. So I want to be, I want people to understand I get it, but I also want to be accurate about what we talk about and how we talk about it, and that includes past and present and future. Alderman Porter, did you have a comment?
Excuse me. I was just wondering if anybody's checked into with the county clerk, if it's too late to put that on a referendum. I've been meaning to call them, but I just haven't had a chance.
So that definitely will, you know, is an option with the council as we move forward, but that's where we're at. And where we're at here after last week's council meeting, you know, that's the majority of the council has made their, has made it clear, and we may not like it, but that's how it works. So. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. Moving forward, under public forum, we have none. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Public safety unfinished business, we have none. Public safety, new business, we have police department here. Deputy Chief Gardner filling in for Chief Woody. Thank you, Deputy Chief. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, August 19th, the police department assisted with a food distribution with the partnership of the YMCA, the Fire Department, and city administration. On September 6th, we have the scheduled swearing-in for a lateral hired officer. There'll be Officer Matthew Davis, who will be coming to us with two and a half years of prior law enforcement full-time experience. That'll be the fourth lateral hire officer that we've embarked on in the last year, and we anticipate that being successful as were the other three. We also have a pending entry level testing for new officers. That is pending a review by the Fire and Police Commission for preference points for education and military. For that testing, we only had five entry-level applicants. All five entry-level applicants successfully passed the physical agility test and also passed the written exam. And today began the temporary school resource officer, Officer Steve Golden, who is one of our lateral hires, was here a couple weeks ago. He began serving that role temporarily until Officer Kaplan returns to that role. Also today, Deputy Chief Wallace began soliciting for applicants for the Citizens Police Academy. If anyone wanted to notify their constituents and refer them to the department's Facebook page, or have them contact Officer Tim Blanketship directly, his contact information is available on Facebook.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Gardner. Any questions for him? Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. Deputy Chief, when does the next Citizens Police Academy begin?
That date is yet to be determined. As soon as I get that date finalized, we will post that on social media. Right now, Officer Blanketship is just trying to gather a list of parties that are interested so that he has an email list to solicit from.
Thank you.
Any questions for Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Deputy Chief Gardner, we seem to have a rash of cars being vandalized, criminal damage to property, rearview mirrors smashed off, windows broken. Is that just in one area that people need to be on alert, or is that citywide? And are you guys any closer to figuring out if it's just a bunch of kids or what's going on with that?
No, thanks for bringing that up, Alderman Freeman. That has not been to a specific area of town. That has literally been all over the entire town here in the last 10 days or so. We have officers, investigators working those cases, and we have the public's cooperation that are providing some information that we hope will be successful in assisting with us there.
So that would lead me to believe these aren't just, you know, junior high kids out pulling some pranks before school starts, that they're actually, would have to be able to drive to get to all the areas of the city. So we're talking about older people, right?
I'm unable to comment on that. The investigation's ongoing. In this particular time, we're trying to exploit any and all avenues to identify the offenders.
Thank you. And I will add that, you know, it is so very important that the public, whenever they see anything or whatever that they contact, the police department is certainly, a lot of times, a lot of times the public is instrumental in being able to solve this type of vandalism and a lot of other different crimes. So anybody who's listening out there, if you see anything, and keep your eyes open, and certainly call the Belvidere Police Department. We don't want to see this continue, that's for sure. So. Thank you. Any other questions? D.C. Gardner? All right, hearing none. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Item B, item 2B. We have Fire Department update, we have Captain Burdick here this evening for Chief Shadle, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Since our last report from last month, we responded to 203 calls for service, which is equivalent to about 7.5 per day. Of those calls, the breakdown is we had four fires within the city limits, vehicle fire, brush fire, a trash fire, and one structure fire that was contained to the bathroom area. We did give mutual aid to Boone Fire District 2, 2 different times, out on Interstate 90. 159 emergency response calls for EMS, including one CPR administration, three overdoses, seven chest pains, two obvious deaths, and a couple seizures. Six motor vehicle accidents, one of those did involve a pedestrian, and 31 miscellaneous calls for service, including fire alarms, public assists, natural gas leaks, CO alarms, a few illegal burns, and some overheating fire pumps. Last month, excuse me, last month we continued with our training. We do have a couple training houses, I know Chief Shadle's talked about that. We did have some multi-jurisdictional training, we did host our neighboring department in Boone County District 2, we had some good training with them. We also hosted MABUS Division 8, the technical rescue team on one of our property on North State. They did a tactical evolution with that, which went well. Ongoing EMS education and some other forcible entry, some walkthroughs of some businesses, and some safety officer training. Other notable events, we did host Boone County Explorer Training this past week with the Explorers. We successfully hosted a couple hydrant block parties in conjunction, I believe, with the Park District, and we've had been participating at the General Mills Park on every Friday to help out the kids there before they start school. And the only thing we have upcoming are, we will be doing our annual muscular dystrophy drive on September 5th, that will be coming up, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for Captain Burdick? All right, thank you, Captain. Moving on, item 3, finance and personnel unfinished business, we have none. Item 4, finance and personnel new business update, Finance Department update, Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Morris. The only thing I have is kind of a continuation from what I mentioned before. Sikich's original audit schedule has them presenting to City Council at the committee meeting at the end of September. Hopefully that's still the goal. I know they are running a little behind because they're waiting for information from Lauderbach, but hopefully they can, that is still the plan, that they will be here to present at the end of September.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hanson? Okay, we'll look forward to that. Thank you. Item 5, under other, we have Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce, street closure for downtown I do have Amy here with us this evening. If anybody has any questions about that, what that's going to look like, I believe it's going to be similar to last year. Amy, is that correct?
All of you should have received, I believe, just wondering your patent, that has been out obviously a pretty close year. People never seen a change this last year, will be a real help if the chief's pressing the biggest.
Amy, Amy, could I ask you to come up here? Would you please come up here? We can see you, but anybody watching can't. Thank you. Thank you.
Does it sound already? Okay. Hi, I'm Amy Nord from the Belvidere Area Chamber of Commerce, and we're talking about the downtown business trick-or-treat tonight. So all of you should have received a letter with the details of the event and the street closure map. This is the same street closure we did last year. Everything seemed to have worked out really well. We had spoken to Danny and Brent and the police department beforehand to make sure that this worked well for everyone else besides us, so we're just asking to do the same thing this year. We attracted about 3,000 guests downtown last year and received many great compliments on the event, so we're looking forward to doing it again this year.
Okay, could I get a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions for Amy? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So I don't recall, I recall, I went last year and it was a huge success, but I don't recall, was it a weeknight?
Yes, so we do it, we do the downtown business trick-or-treat the Wednesday before Halloween. So this will be Wednesday evening from 4:00 to 7:00, and then I believe the IOU parade is the night before Halloween, correct? Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Alderman Stevens?
I've had businesses ask, how do they participate? How do they get involved in this?
Oh, sure. So we have the event registration set up on our website right now, on the chamber website. You don't have to be a chamber member to participate, so anyone who wants to open their doors of their business downtown is welcome to put a poster in the window. We'll have some posters printed for any of the businesses to hang in their window and participate in handing out candy. If anyone from anywhere in Boone County, whether it's Cape Ram, Pupla Grove, Caledonia, or anybody that does not have a business downtown, they're welcome at no charge to come down and set up a tent or a table, or even hand out candy out of the back of their vehicle like a trunk-or-treat. So the registration is free, and it's on our website.
Okay, any other questions for Amy? Okay, hearing none, thank you, Amy. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Specifically, the request is to temporarily close State Street between Pleasant Street and Logan Avenue, as well as Logan Avenue between State Street and Main Street. That's depicted in the handout, that will be on Wednesday, October 26th, 2022, between the hours of 3:00 PM and 7:30 PM. Is there any other questions regarding that motion and second on the floor? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. And Brent, we have item B here this evening, which Mr. and Mrs. Towns came up and talked about, Tyler, so.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo on your desk tonight, intersection review for the intersection of West Harrison and Ruby Street. The current status, as was talked about earlier, Ruby Street stops at West Harrison Street. Traffic volume, based on IDOT's current traffic volume map, West Harrison has an ADT of 900, and Ruby Street has an ADT of 200 or less. Accident history, police department records indicate that there have been no accidents at this intersection in the last five years. Pedestrian activity is typical for the residential neighborhood. Site distance, no site distance limitations are noted, and based on that information and the requirements of IDOT's manual and uniform traffic control devices, a four-way stop condition is not warranted at this time. And for council information, attached to the memo is the section out of the MUTCD where it talks about the warrants for a four-way stop, and currently this intersection does not meet any of the warrants for the four-way stop. The resident indicated concern about the high rate of speed, which would be an enforcement issue handled through the police department, and there are several methods of what we can utilize to do that. Probably first starting with the speed trailer as an advisory, and then perhaps some increased patrols in that area regarding speed.
Alderman Snow?
I make a motion to go with the four-way stop at this intersection.
Okay. We have a second. Second by Alderman Stevens. Okay, we have a motion on the second, and a second on the floor then to install the four-way stop at the intersection of West Harrison Street and Ruby Street. Alderman Porter?
I'd just like to know, you know, what the approximate cost is going to be to do this.
Well, for the increase and for the signage and stuff, it's probably going to be $250, $300. The only thing I will caution you on is when you, when you put up a four-way stop where the warrants are not met, since my employment here, we've gone through two audits, traffic safety audits with the state and through IDOT, and in conjunction with the Federal Highway Administration. And we have been required to remove those traffic safety signage and so forth, that they're not, where they are not warranted. And if we fail to do that, then they have previously indicated that they would withdraw funding, federal and state funding for our transportation program, so that is something that you would have to look at doing, or when we get the next audit, that would be something that would come up.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Well, that's what I was going to ask you, Director Anderson, if this isn't the first time that we have went ahead and done something that IDOT didn't agree with or said wasn't warranted. I think that it's a busy street, and I think it's like a thoroughfare street. There's a stoplight at the end of it, and I think people do tend to drive really fast down that street, and it's also kind of narrow, isn't it? So I don't see why we wouldn't try this.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
And I agree that it is a throughfare, and while the count says there's only 900 daily average, I would guess at any given time, there's a lot more than that. But the fact is that I've experienced it as well, I go down that road on a regular basis, and it's easy to get up some speed and maneuver through, and I would recommend doing this. And again, like Ms. Freeman mentioned, that we have had other intersections that didn't warrant this according to the IDOT studies, so I would ask that everybody move forward. And Brent's been here, Bertin here, almost 30-plus years, it's only two audits.
30? 40?
Forty, so statistically, we're in good shape, and then we just remove some, but you get people used to stopping or slowing down in place, they're going to continue that. So even if this were an intersection that got removed later on, five, 10 years down the road, you build the habit of people realizing that it's an issue.
Thank you. City Attorney had a comment, I see he's got his pen up.
It's waving. We've done this in the past, obviously you know that. I've also been unable to successfully prosecute cases where they find out the warrants are not met. The Illinois Vehicle Code requires all municipalities, when they're going to do new signage, new speed limits, new stop signs, things like that, to obtain the warrants and comply with the federal uniform code. And when you don't, they're not valid. So if a company ever comes down to prosecution, I would have difficulty enforcing those stop signs.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Snow, then Alderwoman Freeman?
I'm assuming based on those comments from Mr. Dole, is that if somebody doesn't go ahead and pay the ticket, if they actually show up and contest it, then it becomes an issue as far as that goes.
It does, but I would never advocate, I can never recommend adopting an ordinance, putting up new signage that does not comply with the law.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Freeman?
That answered my question, thank you.
Okay, so I do know that at one time, Ruby and Harrison was a four-way stop. Ruby and Harrison was a four-way stop. So, you know, I don't know what, maybe there was an audit then that was taken out, but it is, they do a cut-through, I think, down Harrison to get to Newburg Road, or to get to Lincoln Avenue, the park, or to get to bypass 20. So, you know, they come off of State Street. I don't live over there, so I can't tell you, but if it brings out residents with concerns, I have no, you know, I have no doubt that they didn't just come out here to spend some time this evening with it, just us, so. I appreciate you both coming, thank you. Who else? Alderman Burden, did you have your hand up?
I have.
Okay, all right. Well, sometimes I don't see too good peripheral, so.
Yeah, me neither.
All right, is there any other comments? Any questions? The motion and the second on the floor? Hearing none, then we'll ask the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you.
Which means it'll be, an ordinance will have to be drafted in the first and second hearing for that.
We will.
Go forward.
So you'll see this again shortly, eventually with an ordinance. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right, motion passed for the record, we adjourned at 6:43 PM. Thank you, everybody, thank you for your time.